But maybe there's always that thing just once. Yep. Yeah, bikers make a lot of racket, I think.
I'm trying to get onto my board book.
Oh, to log in?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why.
Oh. I always feel like some place. Yeah, I need a pedicure. That's what we should do.
Yes!
The girlfriend. I got playing the piano. Hide upstairs. I don't care. I usually go. I don't believe I go to school because I got a daughter.
I want to go down. No, she said you gotta spend it. It's a little better. Tell her which way it turns.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order on Tuesday, December 17th at 6:04 PM. Roll call of directors, please.
Barnes?
Here.
Blomman?
Here.
US?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Hansen? Hermaning?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Maple?
Yes ma'am.
Zebra?
Yes.
And student rep Mason Priest?
Here.
All present but can't speak.
Okay, and he did tell us he was gonna be coming late.
Item three, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered land, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to the board of the agenda. Okay, we have a motion by Kelly and a second by Matt. Further discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item five, approval of the minutes from 5A Regular Board of Education Meeting, November 19th.
I'll support.
Okay. Motion by Kelly and a second by Kevin?
No. I wasn't here.
Oh, Mike, sorry Mike, sorry. Hear your voice.
Apparently.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry. And then by B, the Special Board of Educational Meeting, November 21st.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. And we have a motion by Kelly and a second by Amy. Further discussion. If... If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then one?
No, I'm a student.
Maybe I have saved the multiple.
Okay, sure. All right. Okay, motion will carry. Item six, public forum. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. General operating rules of the public forum will be determined by the board president once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name and address and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. This time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the board? I'll ask again, anybody? And a third time. Okay, we will move on. Student board report.
Um, so we have a new starting point at the high school. Um, to start the food classes, have done a lot. And we, food's wanting to issue useful for the local food pantry. And they're having a gingerbread health contest that we get to vote on in the I C. Um, food's three just toured I T C for a culinary program. See what that's all about. Um, Quinlan Van just had their contest this week. Both were pretty great. Spanish three just went to the local restaurant, Casa Mezcal, and ordered the Spanish. And then Cal A V started doing their calc and cookies tonight, where they practice for the A V sandwich, is where I'll be going at seven.
Thank you very much. Um, item eight, consent agendas, building committee consent agenda. Kelly?
Okay, we met tonight and we went over a few things and I'm gonna let Steve kind of fill you in on what we discussed.
Thank you. Um, in regards to just ongoing facility issues, just some kind of cleanup things that have been happening through the fall. Um, we purchased the properties, of course, across the middle school. That site has now been cleared and leveled and basically prepped for winter. And we'll leave that sit until spring, until it's settling. And at that point, we will remove the access door that the school's out. And then that area will get contained, fenced in, of course, to secure our property. But I won't do that until after school's out. But everything, we've already been finding that came back to haunt us. We've got no damage, no incidences, which is great, so we'll have to put that to bed. As well, one of the projects we had set with Nexus is regarding upgrading some of our boiler systems at the high school. We basically had started two different rooms. Our boilers are now in place in Penthouse F, which is a picture you see before that digital control panel that we work off of. Um, so the boilers are now piped in. We're working the complete other work at the other boiler room at the high school. And once they're all installed, with the factory rep coming to start up, then it'll be good to go from there. Third, item really was, uh, school forest building, that's completed now. So that was basically recited, re-insulated, taken apart all the old pieces that were bad in the building. Uh, on the outside, that's all secured. And as you can see in the pictures, the windows went in place, everything is trimmed out. And we are secure for winter, so we're happy with that fact. I'm very pleased, the contractor did a wonderful job. It was a local contractor, of course, which is always a good business. And then last item we're going to speak to is going to be the MCA drainage project. We worked with this through the summer and fall. Basically got late in the year, but every contractor got pushed back because of the weather. So that work has been completed before the last snowfall really hit us. And for as far as we need to go with that, I'll do some seeding probably in one area, but that'll be in school. But from a contractor's perspective, that is completed. So, um, that's kind of the update for the big projects as you walk into winter. And the other item would be summer construction budget. Um, you have that before you, it's just a simple spreadsheet of different costs that we have. Majority of the items, items one, two, three, four, five, um, and six, uh, basically are done every year. Um, number seven was asphalt sealing repairs prepared to elementary school. I did not do that school for the last two years because of the fact that the destruction was going to be happening. I want all the heavy equipment off that site before we do seal and restrike that. Of course, that work is not complete, so we'd like to move forward and get that lot, all the lot sealed and secured. Number eight is actually high school locker replacement. We did some of the high school lockers a few years back. Uh, we'd like to do the remaining of those. Um, the nice thing about these lockers is that they don't require any more of the built-in locks. They use a regular panel lock. Um, and these lockers are also six inches deeper than the ones that you have, which is nice if you were to put a Chromebook in or get some depth.
So does that, so that replacement of those, is that finish off the all, all the old remaining ones?
Yes, take care of the different odd reds and blues and different sides. That'll all be gone.
Okay.
And it'll be wrapped, it'll match the same lockers that we have. We put them in the high school, of course, we can seal them, they'll match that, same vendor.
So that'll be done this summer, then?
That's what we'll do this summer if you approve it, correct. Yep. Um, and then we have some hallway painting, all of tile. Um, I explained it to my, um, committee members, it's a, it's a process to go to the top of that tile, they etch it. Um, and such as we're with paint on that, they repair all the spots and then they etch that and put a, it's a applied product on that, on that.
Almost like a bonding.
Like a bonding to that work. The reason I'm looking at that, of course, as well, these efforts are doing a big section of the work up there. Um, and I'm trying to piggyback on that same contract that's gonna be doing that work. Cause otherwise I'm gonna pay extra for housing and things of that nature. So I'm trying to jump on that if you choose, do need soul, that's what I would do. And the reason I'm bringing these forward to you folks is the fact that, um, as talking to contractors, you're booking out. So if I don't jump on these guys, I'm just not gonna get them. So that's why.
One thing that Steve and I have talked about is the connection between already approved board projects, specifically all the high school bathrooms. And we were meeting with the architects this week to start finalizing some plans. Steve, Mr. Lehman and myself, um, some of these things that are in the summer construction budget are connected with, inflow with them. So, for example, the painting of the hallways, it's covering up, um, non-friable asbestos, which is fine. So, I mean, there's possible non-friable asbestos there. It's fine as long as you epoxy, you clear it. So that's a permanent fix. You never have to worry about that again as a district or a board. So those one, but it also connects to all of the work, the almost $700,000 already approved board work uh, in those bathrooms. So there's a connection between the two. That's something that we were talking about with the architects, the connection between all the other different budgets. They're definitely in line with each other as well as the lockers.
Yeah, I'd like to make the mess one time if I could and kind of button it all. I'm gonna lock the high school basically down to make that work happen. We're gonna be demoing a lot of heavy stuff and get some dust control in there, otherwise we're gonna have a problem. So we don't want that filtered through the rest of the school. And then number 10, basically we have some stairwells in the 96 section of middle school that are voided. Um, and there's a lot of space underneath that. So we'd like to open those walls up, put doors in there and make clean storage areas. I cleared with the fire department architect already. They could have done it 96, they just didn't at the time. Um, the reason that number, uh, I believe it would come under less, the reason I say that, cause I look at the old plant, it does not tell me if I have a concrete floor in between that void. I'm bidding with putting concrete in there. Um, I did poke a hole above the ceiling, above the block, to kind of peek in, it looks like I do have concrete. So I'm assuming they did on both sides, but pull it from the wall up. Um, but that would give us a lot of good storage space, we just don't have it. So that's my, that's the work this year, if you choose to approve it, I appreciate that, or how do you wanna handle it?
Also one?
Yep, that concludes the summer construction projects for the board and my report.
Okay. So you guys recommended it before we were done. Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right.
Recommend that to them.
Yep. We'll have a comment with the whole consent. Yep, yes, okay. Okay. Item B, personnel committee consent agenda. Jess?
Okay, personnel committee meeting, uh, was held tonight. Our first item was to review the jobs at vacancies in the district. We currently have two, we have one FTE, housekeeping position, and we also have a 2.5 hour food server position as well. The next item was housekeeping and staff wages. So at this time, um, they have, the administration has come to ask for the ability just to be flexible with the pay scales just due to the local markets and not being able to retain in this position. So currently, um, the pay scale is twenty, uh, I'm sorry, $12.50 to $14.27. They're not saying that they want to necessarily go up to that, just to have the flexibility to move it around. So, um, this is figured in, the $20,803 for the remaining six months of fiscal year, which includes all taxes, W R S, and also includes attrition. So this is there for this budget. Next year, the wages may, may change, meaning go down, may go up. They just want the flexibility to work within that pay, proposed pay range. So the personnel committee unanimously approved that motion. The next item was approval of 2020 summer school principal hire. And that was unanimously supported as well. That position is gonna be split between two individuals. Last year was held by one, so we voted to approve the hiring of Kurt Banded who was for the position, as well as it being shared with Megan Cora for the summer school principal slash coordinator position. The next item was the approval of the high school head girls assistant coach. So we had three, two applicants, both of which were interviewed. And the administration did not feel that they were quite, um, to the level of being the head coach quite yet, but under some great mentorship, that they were certainly well on their way. So with that said, um, Nate and Casey had a conversation. Nate said he's extremely confident in working with Casey, Casey being in this position because he spends a lot of extra hours. Um, he's always very early to school and stays very late. So if you would read in the narrative that, as you can see, Casey is, um, highly recognized for his skillset. He was the Wisconsin Coach Association Coach of the Year 2012, 2015, and a state championship in 2006 and 2012, and a state qualifier 2014, all in soccer. So what we are doing is Casey is going to do this just for this, this soccer season, while also mentoring and Katie Albrecht will be the assistant, while Nick Weber will be on staff to assist as well. So we approved that position, just for the season. The next item with the approval of a temporary one-year contract for the high school varsity assistant dance coach hire. We had a lot of discussion about this position. Um, there were questions simply because if we look at Appendix G, it's a D1 class on there, it states middle school dance, but this is a high school assistant dance coach, so it's really not built into Appendix G from what we were discussing. We are also concerned about potential criticism that, because this was just a volunteer, is what this was at that point in time. But we also have other people volunteering within other activities as well. So we want to, um, make sure that, um, they know that we certainly value the position all the time and the effort that goes into it, but it's, it's not built into the agenda at this point. But we are certainly open to those things in the future. So at this point, we had a motion that was made to approve the position from this date forward versus the entire year, um, just because of all of the, the questions that went along with the position. So, um, that was passed by a two to one vote. Um, the next item was additional resignations, retirees and hires. We have none at this time. The next item is new extracurricular hires. And you'll see in your packet that we have, again, back to Katie Albrecht as the assistant girls, uh, varsity coach, or assistant varsity coach. And we have no future agenda items at this time. And that concludes our report without any further, if there's any further questions.
Just, I'm unclear, do we have both the varsity and the JV girls soccer team, or do you just have the soccer team?
Varsity and JV.
Thanks.
That's the intent. Yes. You never know when the season comes. That's something that Casey and I have talked about, actually, a great time. That when people actually come out, then you kind of see, and you have your coaches, that kind of thing. So, yeah, varsity and JV.
And then I guess, Jess, I have the question, is it a girls assistant dance, um, coach now? So is that just approved for this year or?
Yes, just this year.
As a need?
Yeah, thank you for reading that. So yes, just, just this season. And then next year, if they feel that it's necessary, it will get posted. Because it was not posted, this was a, you know, individual in the volunteer position. And because the budgets and the funds were there, they were wanting to, to do this. But again, we were concerned about with just the big picture thinking of it. It wasn't posted, there wasn't applicants. It wasn't technically in the appendix, um, but we're certainly open to that being reworked. We just wanted to, to make sure that we're following policy guidelines as well.
Right, yeah.
And it's just from this date forward, right, to the beginning of the school?
Okay. Okay. Um, item C, finance committee consent agenda.
Two of the, uh, heavily put a lot of data there that's worth taking your time to look through. And the fact is the pool needs assessment and the auditory needs assessment. I would just say that a tremendous amount of work went in to try and identify all the issues in both those facilities and give us, uh, which we asked for, a, a view of, in each individual item, it's careful like expectancy of what's there and planning for three, four, five, six years in the future to what the expense is estimated to be, um, to the district. So that's a great tool for us to start looking at and prioritizing those needs as that will, uh, marry into some conversations that we'll have later in the board meeting.
That was really, that was really good information.
Absolutely.
Whoever put this together was.
Thanks to Brady and to Steve Kaiser, Michelle Brown, a lot of work went in there.
Really good information.
I'll leave, is there, if anybody has any questions about that, there's really too much information, so I'll put it in the chat right now.
We didn't make the recommendation, it's gonna be coming back. We're gonna be discussing it further.
Yeah, it will be coming up in the board meeting.
We received and recommended acceptance of the audit report and management letter. Ultimately, there were a few minor issues as far as ledger entries or journal entries, but overall, um, the assessment of, of our district was very positive and there were no glaring significant issues identified in that. And then ultimately, our, uh, committee, uh, voted to approve the monthly voucher list and the monthly treasures report.
Yeah, it'll be coming up in nine and 10.
Just keep putting it there, so I'm gonna.
It'll come, your call. I'll go on you guys. Okay, is that it?
Yeah, it is for both.
All right, item D, curriculum and standards committee consent agenda.
Well, there's absolutely no way I'll, uh, I'll ask for help, but, uh, I, I was present for the curriculum standards committee. The minutes from the last meeting were approved. We received information, um, about a pretty exciting new class that the, that the committee approved, which is aviation ground school. And the best way I can describe that based on the information we received is the overall cost to anybody that wants to get a private pilot's license outside of this program is up $12,000 to $14,000 for the flight time and the instruction. And we have the ability with C W Aviation locally, who's willing to bring this program and facilitate it being in our schools, so our students, uh, for about $175 can get the classroom portion of that completed and be able to take the, uh, FFA test. Not FFA. FAA, sorry. Two, two totally different things. But, but they, they have the ability to take that test and, and move right into the ability to start getting their flight hours if they wanna do that. So, um, not that necessarily every one of these students is gonna become a pilot, but, um, a kid that's got a dream to be a pilot, it gives them an opportunity to take a class and find out whether they're chasing the right dream or the wrong dream. And it seems, uh, like a pretty cool thing for our school to be able to.
I'm gonna interrupt for a quick second, but strategic planning was the impetus for this. My getting, or attempting to get people into strategic planning, I was at C W A and I started to meet with them, um, all of the leaders out there. The whole C W A is two different companies, but anyway, they said we need pilots. They, they, they flat outside, we need pilots. And I said, well, we have high school kids, what are we talking about here? Well, they can be licensed by 17.
Yeah.
So then we started meeting with Mr. Lehman after my first meeting, and it really started me pretty quick after that. So Nate's put a lot of back work into that with other organizations, including in the area and out of the area, to kind of come to this point, a lot of back work. So it's an interesting possibility, uh, but definitely connected to some of the outreach of the strategic plan.
We spent a significant amount of time in the curriculum standards committee, um, being updated on how students are measured. And Julie, you're gonna have to help me because I paid attention, but there's no way I can go through, uh, what you were doing.
Yeah, we were just really looking at two major initiatives. And one was guaranteed Bible curriculum, which involves all of our curriculum mapping and alignment activities that the staff are working really, really hard on in their collaboration in service time. And the other one was updating on the, the guaranteed Bible curriculum. And the mapping is the, what we want students to know and be able to do. Another really large initiative that we have going, um, is the U D L, which is the, how students, how teachers and students, um, deliver and tell you what they know. So those are two really big initiatives that we were discussing in curriculum standards and just updating the board based on some requests to do so. And that would have said it, just like that. Right, ma'am?
That's what I heard, right?
Yeah.
You did a great job.
Mapping and aligning.
And then I think we ran out of time and adjourned.
We did.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, any questions?
We'll just. Well, there's no decision.
Okay. So at this time, I would need, uh, seek a motion, sorry. To approve the consent agendas.
I'll take a motion.
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion by Kevin and a second by Mike? Further discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item nine, discussion and possible decision, approval of the monthly voucher list.
Uh, we received an update, an updated summary, um, about cage work, uh, some of the expenses this month. Um, ultimately, the finance committee unanimously approved the monthly voucher list. I would so move that this forward, does the same.
Okay, so motion. And then second by Mike.
As for a roll call, vote please.
Barnes?
Yes.
Blomman?
Yes.
US?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
All yes. Okay. Motion will carry. Item 10, discussion and possible decision, approval of the monthly treasures report.
Um, we were a little short on time, so we didn't go into a whole lot of depth with that, but we still have money to pay the bills, so that's a good thing. Um, our committee approved the monthly treasures report, and I would move that this forward.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So we will. Hermaning?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Maple?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Blomman?
Yes.
US?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
All yes. And motion passes. We're moving on to item 11, discussion, school board superintendent communications.
Yeah, I've written up four different items in there. First of all, the great Christmas time activities in Mozenee. I was really excited to actually be personally part of it. Both of our kids, um, were in the parade, which was awesome. It's one of the best Christmas parades I've ever seen, uh, in terms of volume and number of people and had a, got to meet my old friend Captain Church from, um, Menominee from years ago. He was in the parade, so it was great to see. So so, tablo from concerts, including one during the Packer game, which I was at. So a loyal Packer fan that I am, I was definitely at the event and I did not have my phone on me at all during the event, so, um, and I have witnesses of that. Uh, but it was, it was a great concert on, it was the choir concert on Sunday. Then last night was the band concert, which was equally as good. So just wonderful concerts, full of evenings. I've been to other events as well, including the sixth, seventh grade concert. It was last week, they're all kind of rolling together. But it's quite a bit, the second grade concert, I was at that one. Uh, and several other events coming up, so just wonderful activities in, in Mozenee. I've been very impressed with my first Christmas here. Um, and will be spending Christmas in Mozenee with not just my immediate family, but some extended family even flying in, so fun for us. Um, also, summer school principals, which have already been approved. I've actually met with both Kurt and Megan, uh, now two times. Yesterday, kind of a pre-meeting, today, more of a money meeting. So Michelle and I sat in, we started talking on dollars and cents and staffing, some big picture things. Um, both of them are, are licensed principals, they've come through principal preparation programs. So they're recent in the principal preparation programs. Um, they were the best candidates, we're excited about having them on board. Uh, we've had some good initial discussions. It's nice to have a, a high school teacher in there and a middle school teacher, a special ed teacher. Um, and then also, you know, a coach and someone involved in some other activities as well. So we've had some good initial discussions. Uh, fund 80, uh, point three about the superintendent communications. It's been an awful lot of work. Thank you to, to Brady and to Steve and to Michelle. Just a lot of additional hours, multiple, many hours with a lot of different people. I'm not mentioning them all, in order to prepare all of the, the documents that are now public. And I, I think it's an important part of the discussion. I'm just gonna read one sentence from my communication, which is, "This is a large discussion which has been started in the finance committee. It has many aspects, including how we choose to levy in the future, not today or not next month, but how we look to levy and start to levy in the summer, but also how we choose to provide community services outside of the student services, which is of course our primary focus." So fund 80, um, is that community service fund. Um, and we'll come into that discussion a little bit more in the board meeting. Um, also, initial staffing. So we'll, you've seen initial staffing in the last board meeting. We'll have a little bit of staffing in this board meeting, um, in the form of, of, of caseload factoring uh, from a special education perspective, to look at some staffing from that angle. And then next month, I'll have a staffing timeline. So it's something I had talked about in my initial transition, but we'll make sure that we have a timeline for how we're gonna staff the district, um, and when and how we're gonna make those decisions moving forward. So that'll be coming in January. Aside than that, it's been, it's just an outstanding month. A lot of great activities here, like I mentioned in my first point.
Thank you. All right, item 12, old business. Item 12, a discussion cost of demolition of the house, which I believe Mark asked for.
Yep, Mark asked for this, and we pulled that up in terms of demolition expenses. So the total was $60,964,18. Um, and the number that, that's not in there, we're just giving you demo expense, uh, expenses, were the city, great. where the city graciously, I had attended the, the, the city council meeting, they granted that, the easement that the alley between the property and the playground was essentially given to the school district. That's not factored into this at all, but that's now something that we can totally utilize over time. Steve's very aware of this, we're very aware of this in, in our future plans as we start to develop that. So, that's something that's not factored in there. Also, what's not factored in there is, and it, because it's not, it didn't have to do with demolition of the house, but it's something to be aware of, is the Habitat for Humanity. That Habitat for Humanity came in and we provided them access to the materials so that we didn't have to have another expense on here. They took it, took it, and they're repurposing the materials in, in their warehouse or in the houses that they're using. So, um, I think it was one and a half truckloads.
Yeah, and, you know, lots of different pieces, so they were very pleased to get it, which actually seemed thus cost, and I have a paper, per bucket, so...
It's one and a, it was one and a half truckloads to that extent. So, Habitat for Humanity was excited, so do see have that number out there, um, of exactly where, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, to ask them, there's no real decision on that.
Any questions? Thank you. Item B, Discussion Fund Eighty.
Okay, so the Fund eighty discussion, and there is no decision here, but we started this in the Finance Committee, and a lot of the reference points, this document, um, I have it larger because I need glasses and I need to get the eye doctor. But this is a pretty good, um, depiction of this, and the Fund eighty analysis, Fund eighty, uh, a lot of different funds that run a school district, uh, and that's for the board and, and for the, the, the community that's here. One of the things I want you to note is we pull comparable information from multiple school districts, including comparable districts, area districts, like-sized districts. I didn't ask him to throw in Menominee, but thanks for throwing that in.
I did that for you, no worries.
I saw it and I laughed, and I said, "Yeah, I, yeah, I know about that one." So, one of the things to note about Fund eighty is that you levy to that fund, just like you, you know, we, we make a choice as a board once a year to levy, you know, in this case, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And in two out of the last four years, the school board chose not to levy at all into Fund eighty. Now, we have expenses over zero dollars every year, I want to note. So, so levying zero, we have more community expenses than that, well over a hundred thousand dollars a year, and Fund eighty expenses, easy, that's, that's a very conservative number. So, levying zero, I'm not sure why that was, but that is what happened two out of the last four years. You can see the Fun, Fund eighty history over time, how other districts do it, really it depends, you know, what you're doing, because some districts use it for childcare, which is very acceptable. Alco is not up here, I was talking to their superintendent, they levy seventy-five to eighty thousand every year, and it's a hundred percent for childcare, which is legal, in terms of how they, they utilize those expenses. But you can see some districts, like Stevens Point, they used to be big into it, and now they're substantially lower. So, they'll have situations like the back of this sheet, which we'll get to in just a second, about, um, a lot of information about projections into the future. But before we move off this sheet, how districts choose to utilize Fund eighty is an important understanding for the board. Like I said, there's no money decisions tonight with Fund eighty. Really, it's information for the school board and for the community about an area that we levy or tax to the community. It's an aspect of something that we pass. And I will give an example, that if we're having swim lessons for students during the school day, that is not a Fund eighty expense, it's a Fund ten expense because it's school-related. But if we have open swim from seven to nine o'clock, that's a Fund eighty expense, all right? Because there's, it's not during the school day, and it has nothing to do with the educational program. So, but there's dual expenses in both the auditorium and in the pool, all right? Those are the two biggest draws. There are others, like the fitness center, for the, for the Fund eighty, all right? Now, the outside pool, as another example. We have an outside pool and an inside pool. Now, some of the information, the outside pool isn't used at all for school-related activities, meaning educational activities, K-12, right? It's, it's not used at all. It's more of a service, a pure service that we're providing for the community, but not at all an educational service. Now, that decision was made decades and decades ago, um, but there are upkeep with all of these facilities. Now, what a lot of these school districts are doing, right before we flip the slide, thank you Brady, so before we slip the, flip the slide, what a lot of these school districts are doing is they're, they're, they're levying to Fund eighty and then utilizing Fund eighty in order to set billing procedures so they can reimburse Fund ten, all right? That's how it works. We, we have a, this is more of a policy discussion for January, that our policies aren't set up in a way that could correctly be utilizing Fund eighty to support some of the expenses that are coming up, all right? So, part of this is if twenty years ago, they had set up a system where they could reimburse Fund ten from Fund eighty, a lot of the expenses that Brady's about to flip through on the next screen, now, these are expenses we've talked about in detail, like, like, uh, Matt was referencing. All this is, is a, essentially a Cliff Notes. This is essentially a Cliff Notes, which is that page, this is a Cliff Notes of all of those documents, all of those pictures and all of those documents, this is essentially a Cliff Notes of all of that. Now, we are not saying that all of these things need to be done in January, you know, or things aren't going to start working, that, that isn't being what we're saying. There's some priorities out there, but I want the board and the community to be abundantly aware that we have some wonderful facilities that we use for both educational, but also community services. And I think those, in, in my opinion, I think that's a good thing, you know, we, we, we keep those things open. But there are some facilities, like the outside pool, which we're not using for school at all, you know, and that is quantified on this bottom page. On this part over here, we jump in, you scroll down to the bottom over here, we'll, this part, yeah, there we go. So, the community pool, the actual pool, waiting pool, which is the outside pool, is got five, six hundred and fourteen contact points, and these are contact points in each of those areas. Great work, great information. This data piece is a good piece of data to start making decisions of how we levy going forward, and other decisions on the board agenda. So, in other words, that pool is used so seldom, it has about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of repairs needed on the outside pool. Matter of fact, when I arrived, the pool was just getting fixed, it was shut down in June because it wasn't ready. They were doing things in order to get it ready, so it wasn't even operational in June.
I think we're done halfway through in July, and it's July, too, so that's only half a month.
It's true. It's true. So, one of the things to be aware of, a lot of expenses for the outside pool are substantial. So, do we continue to support an outside pool that we don't use for educate, educational purposes? It's, the other, the inside pool, sure, absolutely, auditorium, we use it all the time. I was in there for concerts and Nate and I've seen a whole bunch of assemblies, we use them all the time, but so does the community. It's a great example of a community, uh, of Fund eighty expense. Now, the expenses down here, if you want to jump to this line, item right, thank you Brady, that this piece right here actually breaks down usage for community hours versus school hours. This is critical, this is big, this is exactly what we're talking about, and it's more about, yes, we want to be a community school, it was built that way, that was part of the promise, but this is how it actually breaks down. So, how to, when does the community use it, when does the school use it for auditorium and for the pool? How does it break out? It's all kind of broken out right over here. Long and short of it, there's a quantifiable way to look at how we afford this into the future, but also what it looks like right now, all right? Are we levying enough into Fund eighty? I don't think so. Not to cover expenses. Are those decisions for the short term? Absolutely not. They're discussion points that can help inform, inform decision-making as we go in forward. For example, uh, we just approved a summer construction budget, um, for Steve, which is great, we're very thankful for that, and we're ready to go. We have a lot of great projects and a lot of great improvements coming forward. Do we continue to put money into the waiting pool when we know we want to fully support the inside pool and the auditorium? Because money I put out there, the board could easily be putting into Fund forty-six for future improvements to the auditorium and the inside pool, don't want to confuse the two, very much a supporter of the inside pool. Just looking at expenses and decision points for the board.
What are those numbers? Can I interrupt you?
Go ahead, no, it's...
Can you raise that back up?
Yep.
That, that's numbers for the inside pool, is that mostly the students? Is that students? Like, I made trips through there and I wanted to see four or five people. Every time I go through, I don't go through there a lot, and everybody tells me how much it gets used, and I never see that many people.
Well, I think you're, we're talking right over here.
Yeah.
So, in July, two thousand three hundred and eighty-three contact points.
But go from like September on.
Right, if you track it all the way over, I think we could scroll this way a little bit, right Brady, maybe on the bottom, there we go.
I mean, that, that's going to students too, right?
So, that's everything. So, this school part here is just, that's students, student contact, or, or, or sports contacts, if there's a sports team that's in there, that kind of thing, that's school-related too. So, yeah, students, some sort of student-related. So, the numbers that are really big, so this is just the pool, the hot tub and the waiting pool, waiting pool being the outside pool, are these numbers over here. Twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight contacts in the inside pool. We are getting an amazing amount of volume and usage out of the inside pool. Good for us. And that, that takes maintenance, that takes a lot of, of, of money to maintain that. Staffing, oh, the seventy-two thousand dollars a year, just to staff custodial, chemicals, and...
Labor and weekend labor.
And weekend labor, so custodial.
What's it cost to heat that in the winter?
Well, it's a very hard number to justify, all I could tell you is that I have, when I've looked it through in magazines, I talked about initial costs, because you talk about heating the water, and also it's really the air ventilation or heat and, and recovering air all the time. You know, it's about a, they figure about a dollar, just seventy-five cents to a dollar a gallon. We gave two hundred and ten thousand gallons in that.
One of the things the Finance Committee has asked us to bring back, and I will do it in January, is what is the, is the yearly expense to run that? The seventy-two thousand dollars doesn't get into heating, it doesn't get into the expense of lifeguards, it doesn't get into expense of the auditorium director, who are well over a hundred thousand dollars a year, just in operational expenses, which is okay, because we have a wonderful community center that is also part of a school. You know, I don't, I don't see that as a problem, but I think it's information that's important for the board to have in decision-making. Of, any other questions at all?
I just make one pre-comment, and that is that, um, so I was in this chair when that whole thing was built and when the, when the city gave up, uh, you know, the, the outdoor pool, gave it to the school district, I mean, um, there were some conflict, some conflicts involved in the process, but, um, you know, some of us might say that the city was happy to get it off their hands, right? But without, I mean, it has been a great resource for our community, and I agree with your use earlier of the word, the promise about why it was, why the referendum passed included that the pool be available for the residents of the school district. I don't recall, I don't even know what I had for dinner last night, but I don't recall the details about whether the waiting pool was part of the informal contract with the voters. So, you know, if there was a proposal brought to the board, you know, due to relatively low usage, comparatively speaking, and the extraordinarily high cost involved, and, and Mark already said that, that doesn't include a month and a half, but without regard to that, um, the, the question I had though was, so we got a donation about two months ago.
Yes.
I think about five thousand or something like that.
That's right.
And I believe, I think I know who it was, um, I know it's an anonymous donation, but I think it was both for the pool and, because this person is a user of the pool and the hot tub.
Yes.
And, um, would that money be put into Fund eighty as a donation?
No.
No, it wouldn't offset what we could do.
Be Fund twenty-one.
It's just a charitable gift that we've received from somebody.
Right, donations are Fund twenty-one, right, Michelle, so it would be to Fund eighty.
Okay.
But that particular dollar amount, we made a decision to use it on audio equipment, so we've already, we've spent the donation.
Yeah, understood.
Just one last piece on this to reference the, the big discrepancy in the numbers, that, you know, it'll be the, one of the, the next point about parking by the Kresge Center and the high school, is that it's, it's a substantial bottom usage for the pool. That, that is awesome. That, that, I've worked in the Wasa School District for a good amount of years, and, and they've got some good pool facilities at NEAR and at Forrest Man, but, but they, we're using our facility just a whole lot more. We could get data on that, but it's not even close. That our community does have access, great access, probably better access than I've ever seen, and I've run a pool for ten years connected to a, a big school. So, the amount of access that our community has to our facilities is better than I've ever seen. And I've been to several districts. Yes?
So, just a couple of observations after this, to the Finance Committee. One, I, I would like everyone, because it's going to be relevant to the next agenda item, to look at the three hundred and forty thousand dollars of estimated expenses to fix our current waiting pool, and, and that's a lot of money, and, and that's relevant to its usage, so that might become part of that conversation. But in regards to Fund eighty, you clarified this for me, and it, it started to make sense in the Finance Meeting where Fund ten pays for everything, and it bills Fund eighty that has this money, but you can't take Fund eighty money and put it anywhere else, it goes to, gets billed to Fund ten and it's a shell game, but then, the money that, that gets put from Fund eighty into Fund ten can then be moved from Fund ten to Fund forty-six, and Fund forty-six can be used to pay for a lot of these expenses.
Yeah, let's, so that was one of the big pieces of learning from Finance, so let's follow that through. Fund forty-six is a capital improvement fund, that's for everything in the district. There's some capital improvements in, in our auditorium and our pool area. So, let's say that in January, we do some policy work and tighten up our policies about how we're billing, you know, Fund eighty, uh, to, to, to reimburse Fund ten. Then, the board can make whatever decision it wants, once Fund ten is reimbursed from Fund eighty, including putting money in Fund forty-six. As long as it's part of the capital improvement plan, then you could make those, those decisions out of forty-six at your discretion.
Because you can't just, correct me if I'm wrong, but you can't just take, let's say, hey, we, we want to spend sixty-five thousand dollars on the pool deck, let's bill Fund eighty. It doesn't work that way. Fund, Fund ten bills Fund eighty for the amount of use that the pool's getting per hour, put through your fancy formula to come up with a percentage to be able to bill for the use of it, not for a particular purchase of something.
The way that we have our pool set up, that is the best way to go about it. For example, the example I used in Finance Committee, a friend of mine, Kurt Wires Superintendent at Schwab and On, they have separate metering for their pool. So, in other words, the gas, the electric, everything is separate, so they're able to delineate very easily what's Fund eighty and what's Fund ten, okay? We can't do that, so we have to go at it the way that Matt explained. We have to bill an X amount, forty dollars or whatever, you know, and then it, and then reimburse ourselves to ten, put it in forty-six if you choose to, but yes, that, that is, it's complicated, and we can work that through. Michelle's got a handle on the, the pieces, but I, we've worked it through enough that I know that that is correct. So, there are, there is some policy work to do related to this in January. So, when that policy work comes up, it's directly related to setting up our billing so that we can start internally affording some of these coming expenses, all right? And there's a way to do that, but we can't, going all the way up to the very top, we can't levy zero, because our community service expenses are much more than zero, all right? And that's not a criticism, anybody was on the board at that time, um, for whatever reason, you know, that occurred, but what I'm seeing is, we're going to rocks out, I've already been asked to bring it back to Finance, and I will, about what the yearly expenses to Fund eighty are. It's well over a hundred thousand dollars, that's conservative, all right? But I'll be very specific with that number, so that the board has... But I'll be very specific with that number, so that the board has specific numbers to work with in terms of how we're gonna fix this problem every time. Any other questions for me at all? Okay.
One last one.
Yeah.
I was a little unclear about what your answer was to Mark's question about the total pool patrons. If we look just at the pool line?
Yep, going all the way to the end.
Yes. In that 22,500 number?
Yep.
Did that include students using the pool for school activities?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna have to do some kind of estimate for that then?
Right, so that's school, that's school usage, so the usage of the pool, uh, for...
Five, seven, or seven, nine, whatever. I said, when I walked in here and saw anybody in there, I was like...
Right, depending on the time.
But of the 22,000, maybe, I don't know, maybe 2,000 are community?
Right.
Okay, or a thousand.
That breakdown is down here. So the further, down at this part over here, as we pull two percentages, this is auditorium. And then...
Right up at the top.
I'm sorry. It's up over here, so...
So the hours is broken down, but not the number of people?
So the way that, and Ben, Ben is here as well, so the way that the YMCA breaks it down, they do, so I took their numbers of overall members, which is that middle portion.
Together.
That is every person that comes through the pool is in that total pool patrons. The only thing we can delineate is the time. So that, we were able to go through based on their calendar structure and give you a breakdown of hours, but they don't have an individual breakdown, to answer your question, Kevin, of students versus community.
So scroll over, one percentage to be aware of to help with this answer is this percentage here, that the difference between community hours, right, so non-students, and then school hours, meaning students, is 86% to 14%. However, and this is the key understanding, it's the 24-hour clock, that between 1:00 AM and 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, that's Fund 10. The heat's on, we're paying for it. So when you, when you scroll over to community hours and school hours, it's actually quite different. It's 75% school, because we're taking care of it when things are shut down.
I get it.
All right? So that, that's a great, it was a great lead in, it was a great follow-up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, moving on to 12C, discussion and possible decision, parking by the Kreske Center and the high school.
Yeah, there's a couple pictures in there that is directly related to Fund 80. So a lot of Fund 80 discussions that, one of the things that was developed when I was asked the question, um, about the facilities, is, okay, if you're gonna fix the outside pool, great, but if you're not, what are you gonna do with that space? So I played it out. What we could do with the space is fully make the front of the high school, middle school and the community Kreske Center handicap accessible. You know, right now, are we handicap accessible? Yeah, kinda, not really, all right? So I played it out in terms of, um, having a rendering. This is where we exist right now in terms of our facilities. High school over here, on the left, this is the proposal, or suggested, not proposal, this is suggestion, for if we're not gonna support the outside pool. In other words, it's not something that has anything to do with educational expenses. If the board isn't gonna do that, we can free up all of this congestion we have on this road by building all of these parking spaces, many of them handicap accessible, with zero entry to the high school, to the middle school, and to the Kreske Center. And the additional issue that we have, when I was talking to Steve, which is the reason I have this rendering drawn out, is right over here, we currently have a, a negative flow issue, which means in the spring, the water, based on where the drain is, the water's flowing into the school. Right, for whatever reason, right? The water, it was set up higher, and the drain is set up higher. So when, when everybody, when it's in the spring, it's right here, right there, it's gonna flow in, and that's causing damage to both the auditorium, the pool, and the entries to the, to the Kreske Center. So there's some solutions there. For 50 to 60,000 dollars less than repairing the outside pool, you could do all of that. Could we punch it out of fund balance and stay above 30%, which is our new minimum? Absolutely. If that's what the board chooses to do. But I'm not looking for that recommendation tonight, right? I'm looking for a, a recommendation for zero dollars, no expense, to allow Steve to explore the feasibility of this with the city. Because this is extremely complicated with, in regards to connecting, uh, to city sewer. This is extremely complex. But I don't wanna have us out there working on a possible thing without talking to you about what we're possibly talking about. I mean, this is a decision for the future, but it's a possibility. We have waterfall problems, we have to fix the outside waiting pool if we're gonna be in the outside waiting pool business. But if we're not, there's definitely a possibility.
He needs to get fire trucks or something there, he's gonna be able to get emergency vehicles in there. If what happens, if something would happen, he'd have to get somebody out.
So our current situation at the end of the school day is, we have the vehicles lining up here. So the, the congestion on this road is, for those that, that have middle schoolers or high schoolers here, it's off the charts. By creating that space, you're gonna eliminate a lot of that congestion. You know, we would obviously, it would have to get by fire code and, we would have to have all those people sign off in it. That's part of the recommendation that I'm, that I'm looking for, isn't for money or to approve this project. I want to be very clear, right? But it's to give Steve, to give us the permission to explore if this is even feasible, from a feasibility perspective. Meaning from all the complex underground piece.
Motion to explore them.
So that's your motion? Bring it back?
My, my motion is to authorize the administration to explore the feasibility of, um, eliminating the waiting pool and creating, um, a parking structure similar to that. Present your comments.
I would second it.
At zero dollars.
Yeah, Amy did.
I know what she did.
Yeah. Okay, did you catch on that, Amy?
I did, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion been met, and a second, Amy, further discussion.
I can just to phase visibility of it with, the codes and stuff.
Sure.
I just have that part of it, make sure that's asked.
That's, that's gonna be one to raise, that's...
Yeah, I mean, and I appreciate that, because the question I have to go to the city of course, there's different variants, and I'm gonna get into that because we built the church over there. We ran the same issues about super strong surface area, blah, 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 blah setbacks. So the city has certain caveats. I just want to make sure I talk to, uh, the city a little bit about this idea, to see what their thought was. Just, well, please bring me something so I can, we can look at it. That's all I'm asking, whether you'd use to move forward, like Dave said, it's really up to you, of course. But I just want to make sure if you did want to do something on this line, that I would have a green light, because, you know, just looking at time tables, if it goes, and goes, it goes. I need to get people docked if doing it to happen.
Meaning a green light from the city.
Right.
So getting, getting a preliminary green light from the city, so that it's a possibility. So if, if we're gonna bring it here again, right, let's say January, February, whenever we, we might decide to bring this back, if the board wants this brought back, then we would at least know from the city that yes, I'm telling you this is gonna happen, and we can completely be done with the privacy.
Just one more observation that, um, as a municipal employee in my real life, it seems to me that, I don't have numbers for it, but waiting pools are a thing of the past, splash pads, which are significantly less expensive, um, seem to be popping up in our park system. If you look at down from Wausau, they have one right outside the Grand Theater, there's one at Marne Park.
And you don't have to guard them.
For two reasons. One, you don't have to staff them because they're not a drowning hazard. And two, I think they're a lot more reasonably priced to be able to do, so, um, I don't think anyone here my motion was intending to act for child or waiting pool or disability pool up. But I do think to the point of, we have some beautiful parks and areas within the city of Mosnee, and I, I think that that's maybe a more appropriate place for a splash pad than outside the school, so that was my rationale for that.
Any other questions, Kevin?
I was just wondering when we're gonna have this discussion. I think this, this, up here on six-year plan, it's gonna start next month.
Uh, we're gonna bring in a policy next month. So the policy, so we'll bring it back next month, but we need to adjust policy in order to start addressing it in a, a way.
One of the things we asked, Kevin, in the finance committee, was that that information also be presented to the strategic planning committee and its, um, thoughts or at least perspective from the community on where the priority of that should be with the budget.
Yeah, we have a state planning meeting at the end of January, so it hasn't been discussed.
So we do have a motion, and a second, further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Both? Motion carried. Item D, discussion and possible decision, half-day, four-day.
Yeah, we're gonna ask the, Mrs. Caldwell to come on up.
So just click when I get your presentation up.
There's a lot of work in preparation for this presentation.
Good evening, everybody, I'm back with 4K. Um, last month I talked to you about 4K half-day Monday through Thursday. So in the presentation that is there, um, some of the information overlaps from last month, but one of the things you had asked for was open enrollment data out. So there are 22 students currently, um, that open enroll out. And then open enrollment in, there are nine total students that enroll into our decision report. This slide shares transportation costs and 4K half-day, like, we didn't know for sure exactly what, um, other strong districts did, so we need a little bit more time to look into this. So Brady, if you wanna click, I'm gonna ask. So the proposal is to offer busing to all 4K students who fall into the transportation area, similar to what our 4K students do right now. They're just going a half-day versus a full day. The district transportation and the AM or PM sessions will be determined by location and availability. So we don't know right now currently where our 4K students reside, so we would need to look at that. For example, students residing or attending daycare on the east side, so we'd have to split the district. They would attend possibly the AM class from 7:55 to 11:10. And then, you know, where students residing on the west side or have daycare on the west side would go in the PM from 11:45 to 3:00 o'clock. It's based on availability, because right now, when we have parents enroll, we might have 75 kids on the east side. So those 15, because we only have 60 available slots in the morning, those 15 may need to push to the PM session. So we don't know currently right now until we have parents enroll, but that's basically, um, the management of 4K. So once we have, if you choose to approve the half-day, uh, Monday through Thursday, then the 4K staff and I will look into all of that management piece of 4K. This next slide, questions and answers. For instance, I just kinda shared with you some ideas, like if families were not within that current transportation zone, could they pay for busing? And they do that right now, so the answer would be yes. And again, based on availability, we don't want to overload our buses or make them too full. What if a parent wants a different 4K class? What if they really want PM versus AM? Can they request it? Absolutely. Um, they can request it, but again, we have to take it, like, we have to case by case look at it. Is there availability? I can't overfill my 4K classrooms. Right now, the, um, 4K directors are looking at like 13 students per class, and some are at 15. We can go up to 20, which is also a little buffer that we have. What site compares choose? I just kinda listed them. We have, you know, the AM elementary, Mosnee preschool, I talked to Vicky, she would like two AM classes, which is another benefit to us. Storybook would have 1:00 AM, elementary school 1:00 PM, Mosnee preschool would have 2:00 PM, and then Storybook would have 1. I put a note, the PM check center, which is our Head Start center, it's based on guidelines for enrollment, so they don't, it won't, this whole, um, standard of half-day will not affect them at all. This next slide, uh, what if daycare is on the opposite side where the family resides? What class would they be assigned to? Again, that's a management piece that we would look at. They would possibly attend if there was availability, um, but we again would look at that. We'd look at, you know, where can we place that student? Do they want the site that's available? So again, that's a management piece once we have the students enrolled. And last, but not least, all the 4K enrollments will be assessed by the school. So the 4K staff, we will look at that, and we will look at their address, we will look at the availability of the classes, and then parent requests. And they will all, all these factors will be taken into consideration when placing students. So it's nothing that we have to decide immediately. We want to look at where the student is coming from. Most districts give a month or two before they say, your child has been assigned to this site in this, um, AM or PM class. Michelle did a proposal for transportation costs for midday 4K, approximately $36,000 for that midday route. So you'd have two buses taking home your AM classes, and then two buses picking up your PM students for the afternoon. The AM students would ride like they do in the morning with the older students. Right now, that won't change. And then the PM kids going home would ride with those older students in the afternoon, and they do that already. All right, Brady, how do I get back to the other?
Okay, I'll get you back there.
Any questions on those slides?
What about, Katie, um, I think I have food services. How would that affect what we currently do now?
So we would not provide lunch to the 4K students. So Vicky, who wants to have to provide lunch, we wouldn't provide lunch, um, depending on how Missy has it. If they're wraparound students, she would provide lunch for those students. Head Start would still provide lunch to their students. Vicky was pretty excited about that. All right, uh, the next slide on here is just some things that you guys had asked for. I know Diane, you would have asked about busing. We will link that in on the enrollment form to the parent handbook. The online forms, Brady and Chrissy are changing that to Skyward, so we're excited about that. Um, the AM and PM, again, the determination is really like that students drop off and pick up location and availability of the classes. The site is determined by parent choice and the availability. And then we just, um, talked to the directors, so the middle, or the Mosnee elementary school is capped at 15, two classes. Storybook is capping at 13. Mosnee preschool, again, she wants to increase it to four classes versus three, which she currently has. Capping that at 15, and Head Start is capped at 10. And the rest of these slides, you guys are just, um, information that I shared last month with you, so I don't know if you had time to look at it, if you have any questions about it. Um, the outreach hours, again, the benefits of 4K, it's in our minds, developmentally appropriate for these little learners. Consistent routine, the time spent at school is more instructional time. Picking the students in our district, I really think that we're gonna have more students wanting, or parents wanting to stay in our district because of that half-day 4K. They spend a lot of time, you know, resting in the afternoon, they have recess time, they have lunch. Benefits of going to those half-days, more services are provided for our special education students, access to the entire curriculum, which is an amazing curriculum, and the relationship between the staff and the students. So again, they're seeing their teachers every day. If they miss a day, they, you know, get to come back the next day. They don't have to wait four days over the weekend to come back on a Monday. And again, I just kept the schedule in there for you, if you kinda wanted to see what that looked like from 8:00 to 11:00 o'clock. And additional half-k, four, 4K half-day Monday through Thursday. Again, we talked about the professional development on Friday, the outreach program that we can hold, those IP meetings that we can have with staff, that we don't have to worry about getting substitute teachers for, our SST 4K meetings, which we started this year with Mrs. Zimmerman and the 4K teachers here at the board meeting. And it just allows for more instructional time overall.
Any questions?
So this is what, you're basing this on four days?
Mm-hmm, Monday through Thursday.
So that would help with the early release days?
Yeah.
A question I have is, what should you do in the half-k? If the child doesn't ride, say they do in the morning, and they don't ride the bus home, if there's daycare available, do they want to stay?
Not at the schools, there's not, but there's wraparound, like, so Missy, uh, Storybook would have daycare available if there's students went there, they wanted to stay there, they could do that. If that were their daycare site, we could bus them from the elementary school if they went in the morning. They would bust to Storybook, or they'd bust to their daycare, depending on where they live.
So what, what was the, uh, state A per student again? I think we discussed it last, one, two, I think, I forgot.
What the sites are giving for each people?
You mean state A per pupil?
Right. There are about 2,500, I think, that we're giving to the 4K sites, which is class, so it's about five...
The state A per pupil varies based on each district.
Right.
And I would have to come back with you, to you with an estimate.
We can, we can get that for you. I appreciate it. But there are reimbursement...
But there are reimburseals to the district for certain. There are part of that.
Can you just solidify the fiscal impact of this choice over what we did previously? So I, I don't recall, it was 30 some thousand for the midday busing. Is, is that the only fiscal impact that we're anticipating for this change?
You'll save money on lunch, where to take the lunch.
I like lunch.
There is no increase in staff at that, if you're adding, they're, really, it's just changing that full day for them to going to half day. So the staff stays the same. You know, Vicky's increasing the section, so she's excited about that, just having four 4K classes. The busing would be, in my mind, really the only thing.
Yeah, the busing increase is the, is the bulk of the, if not almost all of the increase. But one of the discussion points that came up are the benefits are quite a bit.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure that, how much does this cost change? That I can put, I can put a legitimate number to it. And so is the number 30 some thousand for the, the busing in the middle of the day? Or are there additional busing costs on either end of the day?
Well, they're riding in in the morning already, and they're riding home in the PM. So you just have to have the, the middle of the day. So you need the ones that are going home to get going, and it's just a matter of, they're just trying to plug them all in where they're going.
Yeah, 30 some thousand dollars for the whole year.
Yes, yes. One point I wanna reinforce is that all the 4K staff, all of the sites, whether they be our sites, in our elementary schools, Storybook, all of the sites, they, we're all on the same page. So you see a lot of head shaking back there, see a lot of 4K tab here, but all of them are on the same stage. So that's, it's a great place to be considering some other things that I've seen in the past, just on video, on about 4K. So I would very happy about that.
What has been the feedback from parents? Have we solicited for comments and concerns from them about the change?
I talked to a few parents, and I know the staff here has talked to parents. Positive on my end. I actually just talked to one today. Very excited about the busing was a concern. And I said, based off of where you reside or your daycare is, that would contribute to whether the students bused or not.
So we haven't done like a full up survey to, to put this out there, to see if you let them chew on it, get the buy-in, haven't done that yet.
No, and from my experience, we don't typically offer like, because some parents are gonna want it and some parents are not going to want it. And based out of board, if you want me to do that, I absolutely will, but you're gonna have like, you're gonna have both sides.
Absolutely. My concern is, is because of what Superintendent Munoz was just referring to is, in the past, it, it was, wasn't perhaps a smooth conversation. It wasn't cut dry and clear. And I wanna just make sure that we're making an informed, thorough decision before we say, this is what we need to do. I wanna look at all angles. And I think it would just help for you to find by, by getting that feedback from the families. Because just speaking, granted, 15, 16 years ago, I was on the reverse end of that. I was a parent that wanted the half K, and then they were forcing us to go a full time. And I had a special education son, and it was not a good choice for him, but I had the choice in matter. So I just wanna make sure we're, we're giving that, that feedback to the families to say, what is best for their child.
And, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna let Kevin speak first, and then I'm gonna add to your point, but Kevin, go ahead.
Well, you and I were on the board when we went to a full day kindergarten, and that boat was five to four. Regular kindergarten. So that was about 17 years ago, about probably 20 years ago. And because I don't know, what is our optimal class size for regular kindergarten?
It varies. Right now, we're at 21, 22. Two years ago, it was 18, 17.
Okay, so this, I think I heard you say is about 15, right? So I'm not advocating that we would go to 18 to 20. I can tell you, because I've been looking at this, and when I saw this on the agenda, Madison has a, a one to 18 and a one to 20, depending on their sites. You're not talking about adding more staff? So if you had three or four more kids who ended up showing up, you're still not, you're gonna incorporate them into the existing classes?
Yep.
Might be different locations, but okay.
Yes, and we can max out at 20. Missy chooses to do 13 because she just has a teacher. And once you get to 15, DPI recommends an assistant in the classroom. So she chooses that. She may potentially, if she could get 20 and 20, she may just go ahead and hire an assistant and then get those extra 14 students. But yes, we have legal room, so, which is really nice.
And what I want to just add to Jess's point is that, you know, half day, from what I see every day, yes, four year old, you know, they, it's very difficult for them to go all day. But, you know, I mean, I see that something, and I think this is a great idea. I am worried, you know, Jess brought up some good points about making sure that it gets out there. Is there a way we can send something out through Skyward just to say, you know, this is coming through for a final decision? I think, you know, getting feedback from a lot of the board here, I think it's gonna be, it'd be well supported. It's just, let's make sure that people are out there and aware. Get it out there, and this is gonna be a decision, here's your time to speak. Because, you know, as a parent, my kids are all gone, and it was difficult for me to find daycare way back then because a lot of daycare providers didn't want kids that were on a paper roll schedule. Because I worked 12 hours, he worked 10 hours. It was very difficult. So maybe we can look to partner with another daycare, because, you know, learning from Weston, I know the Y is huge. We don't have anything, and we have Missy, but you know, is there another possibility we're not looking into? You know, and bring back the final, I mean, that's just my concern. I just don't wanna make this decision, and then next month, we come back and all these angry parents, we have 4K kids coming next year. And I know, I mean, I see it every day, you know, gotta go, get out, go. They're just not ready for all day school, they really, really are not.
I got the answer from Michelle about district pays or receives $4,663 for a 4K student open enroll, which is a rough estimate of the amount per student, that's for 4K. So 4,000, thank you for presenting that. So $4,663 for a 4K student. So that's the answer to that question.
Well, and is that pro-rated at the record as half, or is that still that great?
No, that's that whole amount, 4,663. Yes, yes, absolutely.
I mean, one minor disappointment for me is the timeliness of this request to the board. And I say that because my understanding is, parents are gonna start signing their kids up and making decisions on where they're gonna go in early February. And if, I, I would agree that there's the opportunity to somehow publicize that there's gonna be a change and receive feedback and give people an opportunity. Because unfortunately, they don't look at our agendas to see the decisions that are being made for the most part. So I, I think it's, it would be inappropriate for us to make a decision on like January 20th and on February 1st. Is the race to sign up and get the location that you want or your, your recommendation? And so we're, we're kinda pinned as a board in making a decision. If we postponed a month to try and accomplish what I think is important, we're, we might be doing ourselves a disservice, because parents are like, hey, Mosney doesn't even know what they're doing yet. And we only have 10 days to make that decision and figure that out. But yet, if we make the decision today, then we didn't get the opportunity to get the feedback, which might be really valuable to us. So I think we're, it's a double edged sword for us right now with our decision.
It is, but it's not a large number of students, though. I think that's the benefit to us, and it's a smaller number for these kind of, so I, I would just rather make sure we get it right.
And they're not all that happen, don't be worried.
Well, the part of the, part of the thing is to decide, to look at what some other districts do in order to get feedback. I mean, some of it is, shoot an email on Skyward is one thing, but you're kinda guessing if they, if they have, let's say they have a third grade student, right? So I'm guessing the third grade parent is gonna have a soon to be 4K'er. Well, I know we have some numbers for our strategic plan, that they definitely have students that will be coming into 4K. I just, you know, we're having personal discussions in terms of getting them onto that piece. So I'm not sure, well, I, I don't have an answer about the methodology, but if, if that's the direction of the board, then we can come back with something for you at the next board meeting. We can do outreach, we can do listening sessions. There's any number of different things that we, that we could action in a month. I mean, we have the holiday we're coming into, so we're talking January 3rd to...
So we have a 4K open house set up for January?
16, 3:30 to 6.
So that's something that we can get this downward methodology this week, and then we can have information at the, that open house. The goal of that was to have parents come and visit sites to see which site they wanted to possibly send their child to, because we've never done that before. So we could definitely have informational studies with each of the directors at those locations.
And that would be a good opportunity to get feedback from specific people who more directly would be involved. We'd be happy to bring that back to the board.
Well, that's, that's 16, and then our board.
So the open house, the communication to the community is, the board would be evaluating, like, at the open house, you can't tell them is it full day or half day, because a decision would have been made. So there's, in some way, you're gonna try and pull these people that are there.
Right. Well, just talking with them, and, and like Jess said, there's not, it's not going to be like hundreds of people, you know? So if you look at each site and they, you know, the number of people that might be going there, you might reach half of that, maybe 60. But that's a good percentage. If 60 people show up and they give us their feedback, we can kinda estimate what the other 60.
Think about it like, feedback that we get with the outreach that we do at our own staff. We're not gonna get a hundred percent feedback, but that's pretty valuable feedback from specific, will be 4K, yeah.
I, maybe I, maybe I misspoke.
Yeah.
Something that's quantifiable, are you gonna ask everybody that attends, here's, please fill out this, here's who I am, and here's what I think of for half day or whole day? Because if at the next time we receive our information, I'm like, hey, a bunch of parents thought it was a good idea. Like, how about we had this many people attend and this many people that were willing to share their, their thoughts on this? To be able to have some numbers associated to it as opposed to anecdotal, like, I appreciate having conversations with people, but that's necessarily a representative number that, that helps me make necessary decisions.
I understand what you're saying. So like, if I were doing open house at the elementary school, I would welcome them, I'd let them meet the teacher, then I would share with them, we have a proposal, we're looking at half the 4K. These are some things to consider as a parent. I'd explain that to them, and then just say, here's your ticket out. Can you please fill out this information? Do you prefer, based off the information you heard tonight and what you know our program was, which would you like, half day, full day? And do you have any additional questions or concerns? And are they, are there things that I can address without having to, you know, call a parent back? Like, can I get out another message to 4K families, like, thank you for attending the open houses? These are some questions people had about the half day program? And just send that back through those families? And if each site did that, you'd get some pretty valid feedback.
So I don't know how I found it, but there's this thing, as you know, because you probably one did it, Brady, probably, the 4K handbook. Okay? And on the page five, it specifically says, "Transportation issues midday prohibit us from offering a half day program." So somebody maybe knew, looking around and finding that. It seems to me that if we're going this direction, the very least, we maybe even wanna take that down at this point for this next 35 or 50 days or whatever it ends up being. I mean, it's kinda, if I, when I read that, it's like, well, transportation issues are the re, midday are the reason we're not doing this. So clearly, they're not as great as they really are, because we're prospectively going in this direction.
And I also wanna be, I wanna be clear with the board, it's perfectly okay for us to wait a month and make the decision. But we may need to wait a month in order to open things up, because for us to start February 1st is likely, not likely, it will not be today. It'll have to be March 1st. So for us, if the decision is made in January, then, then our start date would be March 1st. It's not tenable from a technological and a workflow perspective to get it done.
And what are the limitations or the cons to that?
Yes, I was gonna say, what is the drawbacks?
What are the negatives? Yes, if you wait till March 1st.
What is open enrollment? That's gonna...
Open enrollment issue.
Isn't that all year? Mine's always used to say open enrollment is all year, so I don't see any specific issues with March 1st. Parents just like to do it. And again, if we communicate that out at the open houses and through Skyward, based off of the decisions we're looking at as a district, we're pushing our 4K enrollment to March 1st. Many parents sign up between February and all the way through August, you know?
We'd like to, Brady, but I think to get the full amount of information we want and to feel comfortable as a board, I would feel much...
Sounds like that's the direction that we're going, there's something that we'll... We table, we come back, we come back in January, we'll continue to work on exactly on those directions. So what I'm hearing is get some feedback from the 4K parents that are coming to the open house.
Yes.
And then let's present the feedback in terms of the steering of the next of the board. Push our start date from February 1st to March 1st. And then we have a decision process with the board with information available. Everything's public for a long period of time, so people have time to...
The users of the program are the ones that we are going to hear from during this interim period of time.
Absolutely.
Before the 20th of January.
Also something that I...
Right, that's what I'm hearing.
I could also bring it up at strategic planning. This Fund 80 and 4K can be part of my, I have a public piece at the start of each of these strategic planning sessions. So I can make that, that focus.
You know, and, and now that we maybe have this time built in, could we maybe look at something for childcare for a parent that says, this is not gonna work for me? You know, I know, Missy has it, what's the room availability that she might have? We may have that come back next month.
Diane, you're not talking about having, well, maybe you are.
Well, I'm just saying...
Of having the school district provide daycare services?
Nope, not at all.
Yeah, just being sure.
Right, just another...
Because some schools do that, and that's another use of Fund 80. I just wanted to make sure that that's...
I think she...
She were talking about. Well, hang on, then you have a whole longer issue, because now you're having the school district competing with private daycare, right? Which I personally would be opposed to.
Yeah, I was doing, I was giving an example with Fund 80 in Elko. I wasn't suggesting that you move to...
And I know that.
Like, right now, the only one that has is Missy or Storybook. She has it, so what's the room available over there for her?
But there's also in-home daycares, and so there's a lot of those. And again, I just wanted to remind you that they have daycare every other day, because their kids are either going Monday and Wednesday, so they have daycare Thursday and Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, or vice versa. So there is, they, they have the daycare currently. It's just how it's now going to look for them. So instead of my child going Monday, Wednesday, Friday to daycare, they're gonna go all morning.
Right.
You know what I mean? And, and again, that might be something they have to work out as a parent, you know, just with their daycare provider, but...
I, I know when I was in a 4K room, I, I talked to two parents, definitely not a, you know, representative sample. Both of them said something along those same lines. I was very interested by the feedback. They were like, well, daycare is daycare, whether I do it here or do it there or half day. You know, that was the feedback from two people.
If I could just add something to, I guess, I would just advocate for the fact that, you know, the communication about 4K, I think there's a balance between, obviously, doing something that our community supports and, and finds that will, you know, work for their schedules and their daycare and... But I think we still need to strongly advocate for the fact that the half day is best for kids. Like, I think we still really need to strongly, the reason we're doing this isn't because it's just sorta better. I mean, it truly is, you know, in the best interests of children. So I, I think that, you know, that's still a really strong piece, and I, I don't know how you feel about that, but in my, all of my experiences in working with, it just is a great approach. Now, if we have strong opposition, then of course you don't want to get into, you know, some battles about that. But I, I do think that, you know, what we would be advocating on the school side is that the, the practices and the best practices surrounding developing a 4K children would be, you know, that's why we're recommending it, is we just feel this strongly, so...
I would just say that we have a messaging problem. If parents are saying, and they do, daycare is daycare. If half day kindergarten is viewed, constructed from the parent's standpoint as just another form of daycare, we have a messaging problem, and we have to fix that.
No, no, they meant, it doesn't matter if my child goes to daycare on Tuesday, Thursday, or if they go every day half day.
There are community, maybe, maybe you are right that all the parents think that way. But that is not the way many people in the community thinks, think. Many people in the community feel that having 4K school is an alternative to families paying for daycare.
A lot of them still pay for daycare for a full time spot. Full time spot.
I get it. I'm just saying that we should not be viewed from the school perspective as we're an alternative to daycare. No, we are school. Your child is in school that half or full day every other day. So that's a concern that a lot of people have throughout the communities, plural.
But thank you very much, Katie.
I hear it all the time, too. Not all the time, enough.
Enough. Okay, I am 13 Business, discussion and possible decision acceptance of the class 1957 donation for senior fees.
Yep, I talked to, to the, to the group donating this, they said absolutely could be used for senior fees. I talked about senior fees, so I just wanted to put that in, that's for the standard.
Thank you for that, Brandon.
Absolutely, yeah.
Motion by Jessica Second by Mark for the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item B, discussion of possible decision, YMCA memorandum of understanding.
Um, this is something I threw up there, it's, and I'm just gonna just throw it right out there. It's not my recommendation that, I haven't signed this and I don't think it's necessary. We've never in over 20 years had an MOU with the YMCA, all right? This particular MOU, actually it's the other point, Brady, there you go. So this particular MOU, the other thing was just expenses and stuff like that that I wanted to have in there. But this particular MOU talks about sunsets and deadlines and all of these sorts of things. So we've never been under an MOU and I don't think it's necessary to be under an MOU. Um, I just wanted to make sure the board was, I've had discussions with the YMCA, active discussions with the CEO of the YMCA about different billing structures, rebates, kickbacks, anything that could save the district.
Wouldn't it all be cheaper to do it ourselves?
Yes, sir.
I tried talking to Fred about it that one year and he just said, you know, I said, even if you had to hire somebody to be pool director, I mean, it was still a bit cheaper. Depends on the administrative fees and stuff.
Yeah, we're probably spending north of $150,000 a year on the YMCA, just the YMCA.
That was part of the flag football or junior football, whatever it was called at the time. And we were paying $15,000, Nate sent one person down, we had to supply the coaches and the refs in the field and I don't know what we were paying them for.
Right, I think it's a valid point, it's a valid concern. I think this is something that I will definitely bring back to the board in short order, but you bring up a valid point. And the district, not in my opinion for the waiting pool, but for the inside pool, uh, we definitely could run the own thing and I think provide as good or better service without the YMCA. I believe that that is true, but I don't think we're at the point for a decision that way. I don't have a recommendation that way yet, I'm still looking into things. I'd still like to have further discussions with the YMCA. Um, I'm not going to sign, it's not my recommendation to, to sign this. I don't think we need to do that because we've never had one. I just wanted to make you aware of this outreach because this is new and it developed from a conversation with the CEO and myself. So the CEO and the Y and I sat down and we talked in depth about the relationship and, you know, because he, I've been doing a lot of research on billing and Fund 80 and all these sorts of things. So, you know, this makes sense that he had drawn this up, but I'm not suggesting to change, but you bring up some valid points.
This is something we've never had in front of us either.
Well, if we never had one, right, you're using this thing on record, correct?
We weren't ever aware, I think, of what we were even paying out to the Y.
No.
That was six, seven years ago, we probably, that was, we thought, we brought it up and then it never came back.
Right.
I think it was Jerry's last year, I don't know what that was.
It's, it's a large amount of money.
We used to have different agreements, more than 10 years ago, but we had one. How did your meeting go with the new executive director of Boys Drill School?
Outstanding. We have follow-up meetings, we have follow-up meetings coming actually in January. And I'm actually going to bring them to me, all the administrators don't know this yet, but he's actually coming to meet with all of us. So we had a really good initial meeting and we'll have follow-up meetings.
So what would happen if we...
Uh, we'll just continue on as we have, it was a handshake.
So we do, we do not have a, I just want to make sure, nowhere in the file somewhere is a contract from 20 years ago that's recurring? If there's not some action taken?
No, there might have been contracts in the past, but there's nothing that is binding at this time, which is why he initiated the MOU. I, I think it was a wise move for him to initiate the MOU. You know, and it was because his research and my research brought up the same thing. That we were essentially operating in a year-to-year or a day-to-day, month-to-month sort of situation.
So as currently stands, there's, um, there's no initiative on the part of the YMCA to help mitigate some of the costs associated with the services they provide?
I've attempted to do that and I could, I'd be happy to attempt to do it again. In other words, we'll cap it at 50,000, I'd be happy to sign the MOU.
Right, I guess I'll be more specific.
Yes.
The YMCA was not open to any suggestions on how to reduce the cost to the school district due to YMCA?
Not with my meeting directly with the CEO.
And this is how we are currently, October to January, February to May?
Yeah, I actually threw the bill in there again, Brady had clicked into it. It's that first piece billing summary, that one right there. So we've been billed, we have our second bill coming, this was the first bill.
Okay.
So the billing cycles.
That's just for the inside pool, right?
Well, that's for everything the YMCA does, that's...
They just suffer school programs.
Mostly. The outside pool is, we guard it essentially.
Might as a joke.
Thank you, thank you. Not sitting next to you doing it. I appreciate it, Mike. That's all I have on that.
You're gonna, you're gonna look in to see what I would be doing at that house?
Yes, yes, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so we can just move on? In action, correct? Okay. All right, moving on, discussion and possible decision acceptance of evaluations from school violence drills. For those in school.
Yeah, this is a regular report, so I'm...
Oh wait, um, sorry, sorry.
Delegation, sorry, yep.
Discussion possible decision, approval of the delegate in wise beat, representative to vote on resolutions and priorities for convention.
Motion to approve Kelly Zebra as the last delegate.
One second.
Hey, we have a motion by Jessica Second by Mark for their discussion.
Give us a good report again.
Sure, if not, anybody who wants it can come sit with me and I really think it's a high opener.
I would like you to approve 2010.
Okay, I hear you, Mike.
The year 2010?
No.
I agree.
Yep. I'm on that, guys, yes. That's the Native American mascot.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. No. Discussion impossible decision acceptance of evaluations from the school violence drills for Mozeni School District.
Yeah, this is a pretty, a regular report, but I've had a conversation with a couple of board members on this, one in particular. We do have some work to do on this, uh, we are knowledgeable about some work we need to do about this, including our incident command structure. Uh, so I am looking for, if you have any questions, I could jump into it more specifically. But if we could approve this with the understanding that I know there's work to do on this and we're going to continue to look into refining that work with new systems we have in place, um, including making sure that our, our command structures are the way they need to be.
My question I have, David, is every single student involved in all of these safety plan? I mean, do they all follow the buyer drills and every student's going out and all of...
Every student.
I mean, they're back in plan phase, so...
Yeah, I mean, as many students as, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay.
If at all possible, yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's going to be an exception here or there, but if at all possible, like students with, that are temporarily injured or inability. You know, there's, there's locations that they would go and, you know, stuff like that, so with the drill. So in, in all cases, possible, yes.
Got it, okay. All right, otherwise I would need a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Jessica and a second by Mark for their discussion. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Item B, discussion school calendar.
Um, we put a good amount of work into a possible school calendar. Uh, you'll notice this isn't up for a decision, just discussion this month. So the actual potential school calendar, there's been some adjustments. Some of the, and what I want to preface is, when we created this model, we started with multiple models. But this particular calendar is based on, the start of it was based on, on one premise. And I brought it to the board already and it's that we have too many, at this time, in our current structure, we have too many teachers that are in meetings during the school day when they could otherwise be teaching, all right? So when this calendar was mocked up, I think we're pretty close to a final calendar. We know that the way this calendar is structured, that we can reduce that. That we know that this is one piece to multiple different things that we can do to help reduce that number. What number is that? The number of teachers that are in the building but not teaching their class because they're in meetings, all right? So setting up a calendar like this, you'll notice that, you know, professional development is spread out. I, I want to bring up a few points, if you look at Thanksgiving. I think having classes, in my experience, uh, the day before Thanksgiving, um, we just, we can't do that. The vast majority of schools will run Monday and Tuesday, so the recommendation is run Monday, Tuesday, but absolutely not on Wednesday. Um, some other things that are built in, um, if you want to look at October, is, yep, up a little bit, over there. So professional development on the 29th and the 30th, that's standard in a lot of districts, including Wausau, D.C., Everest and multiple others. It used to be back in the, they used to call it the MEA Day or the, uh, Union, State Convention. There used to be a lot of that, so that kind of faded away with Act 10 a little bit, but a lot of districts still build in professional development. So we have a really good plan, like I said. This calendar was mocked up, there's no decision necessary, I, I was thinking of discussion to make sure that we're building in enough professional development so we don't have to take teachers out of the classroom when they otherwise would be teaching students. Uh, November, we already talked about, December, if you could scroll down to December, thank you Brady. Um, winter break, that is, the way that it falls and the way Christmas falls is on a Friday. Um, so when we looked at that week, it was, it had more to do with where, uh, where, uh, Christmas Eve fell and, and how that works. So we more attacked that like, uh, exactly how we looked at November, in other words, Thanksgiving. So that break is, is more connected. Also, more professional development in January, that usually breaks up the semester. So you can see January 18th, pretty sure that's Martin Luther King Day. Um, most districts will have off that day for a couple of different reasons, to transition semesters and to move from one semester to the next semester, but also, so to get that in line, but also to get the professional development with that as well, mid-year, as you're moving from one semester to the next semester. You'll scroll down to February and March. Some of the things built in here is, you can see PB, professional development. So non-student days, all districts in-service, um, the 26th is, is another piece. Spring break? Yeah, go ahead.
Are there schools that have, I must have been two, three years ago, we were in, down in Milwaukee and they were talking about some schools are shortening it or eliminating, get something, get out early. Is there any schools around here that do that?
To get out early, when?
Get out in the end of, uh, in May or instead of going in...
Right, and like eight minutes a day or something.
Right, you can, you can either, you can even have four-day weeks if you start at 7:00 AM and go to 4 o'clock. There's certain districts that'll do that, but then you start to jump into...
No, you just, no, it's still, just eliminating spring break.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Just taking spring break, there was a couple of schools that did that, I didn't know.
Sure, you, you could do that, but right now this is aligned with several districts.
I'm not suggesting, I just didn't know, I think there was still a thing going on, I know.
I, I haven't heard of any districts.
Okay.
If you want to scroll down a little bit to the end of the year, and I'll know if at the end of the year, we still have graduation. I mean, sitting in the same spot. So graduation is in a comparable spot on the 28th of May. But the rest of the students would end a couple of days later on the, I think it's Thursday the 3rd. Um, and then that's an early release day. This would give us transition time for summer school and then a teacher wrap-up day. Now, there's flex days built into this as well. Um, but essentially what, setting up a calendar this way, which really only extends three, four days beyond what we're doing this year, this builds in an additional snow day. I looked at snow days over the last 10 years, so we averaged 3.8 snow days in Mozeni for the last 10 years, 3.8. This year, this calendar, has three snow days built in, and I already used one of them. So, so if we get beyond three snow days, we have to either add days or add minutes. So my recommendation, if you look at May, May, May 3rd is, is a no-student day right now. That's day four. So three days stays built in. With this, the fourth day, if we need to have a class day because there's too much snow, we go to school that day. But if we don't, it's a professional development day. So we, I looked at the averages, how many snow days were called, last year was out of the ordinary. It was eight. You know, we did 12 in the nominee, eight was way out of the norm, so I looked at averages and it's 3.8. Yep.
If you have school that day?
Yep.
Where are you adding the PB day?
It would be a, probably a flex day. So right now we have flex days built into the schedule, flex days is something that, um, as an admin team, that's the work between this meeting and where we're looking for final approval. Um, is, but we've had a really good discussion about flex days, specifically summer work time uh, for curriculum development and different things that we can get done so that we don't take teachers out of the classroom. Questions?
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time in quite some time that we're starting prior to Labor Day.
Uh, Labor Day is, starts later. The law, the law in Wisconsin is September 1st. So the law in Wisconsin is you can't start before September 1st. But a lot of people assign that to, it's, a lot of people do that, assign that to Labor Day. So Labor Day is actually on the 7th this year, so yeah, that's...
And you push it back a week to the A.
We'd be going to school second week in June. We shouldn't do that. I can if you want, but I... Any other questions at all? We looked at multiple models and I, and I really think any other feedback that you can give us, we'll take it to the administrative team, make any sort of refinements and then come for a vote in January. Okay, if you have any other questions, feel free to communicate through Diane or through me.
All right, moving on, discussion, special education staffing plan with tiers.
Right, and as, I'm going to have Mary come on up here and we're going to pull some of the information up. Uh, I had promised to bring staffing to you over multiple months. This is a staffing piece, but it's from the special education perspective. I'm going to give a little background, not trying to steal thunder, but just trying to set it up. Um, kind of set Mary up or tier her up to where she's going with this, this mini presentation. Um, this gives something, I, I went to Mary and I said, okay, you do caseload factoring. She absolutely knows what it is, she's done it before, but it's not been done here, um, in Mozeni in recent years. And essentially what caseload factoring is, there's, there's some numbers out there you can look at from the state in order to quantify why we have, for example, in some cases, five students and one teacher, um, in a special education realm, right? So the state gives different formulas, so what this does is it gives the board and administration a lens to look through staffing for special education. A lens that is, that is filtered through, um, a lot of different formulas that the state has approved, okay? So it's different, like it's a different number for an LD student, an EBD student, an ID student, et cetera. So there's different numbers assigned and weight assigned, um, for that. And then it's a decision-making matrix essentially for special education, and I'll let Mary take it from there.
Sure, Brady, can you go back to the spreadsheet, please? So what we did is we took all the students, Denise helped me with this because it was a big project, and we looked at all the students, what their disabilities are, what their grade levels are, what their services are, whether they need OTPG speech, whether they're, um, like a social emotional child who has a lot of disability or has a lot of, um, behavioral issues. And so when we went through it, we followed the DPI factoring. Um, this spreadsheet shows how each caseload comes out with the factoring versus what the state... comes out with the factoring versus what the state feels we should have. Um, a lot of ours are over, what the state is, uh, is showing. Um, but in some, just, or in some buildings, we have like co-teaching, like at the high school. And so, even though we're over, we have different programs that kind of absorb some of that. But where we're really struggling is in our middle school. If you look, uh, where you can pull that down, that's where the little.
Down.
Okay, yep, right here, we're, he's right.
He thought I ended.
Okay. Yes, so if you look at number 16, which is, um, Nubin Korox program, and if you look at, I'm just looking here. If you look at number 18, which is Nicole Nicolays, they are very heavily factored because they're the social-emotional behavioral kids. Grad can contest, we have lots of discipline issues, lots of time that we spend with those kids. And because of that, by asking for another EBD teacher, it would really be able to separate out all those kids right now. And together, we can't have a self-approaching program, um, and some of them that could be out in the classroom are with the kids that really need self-contingency, so they feed off each other, and we have a lot of issues with, with those two, like, caseloads. And then we have, um, elementary that is factored out, and high school that's factored out. And as you see, the resources that we have, I mean, a lot of our kids are very difficult. And like, if you look at number four, which is case negotiations, um, she has 19 factoring, and there's really supposed to be 16 based on the state. And then if you look at Amy's, which is number two, she should be, um, 16, and she's at 17.1. And it will tell you, we've actually gotten a couple more kids since we did this factoring a couple weeks ago, so it would even be higher.
Just jump in real quick, just notice, there's no decision needed here. This is information for the board, so when we come with staffing recommendations, and we have information about special education, we're gonna reference back to this document and say, this is the empirical evidence of why we would ask for an additional teacher in this area. Uh, for this reason and for this, this, this data reason.
Um, and we have a lot, I, I went into the speech, language, the OT, the PT. Um, some of them are part-time positions, like if you look, um, our OT is four days a week, our PT is two days a week, and so, the maximums are for full-time for the, for those therapists. So, a few of them are a little different because, oh, and also, our speech therapist is two days a week in high school. And so, per number is 12, but they say 40, but that would be for a full-time person.
Here, what I'm looking at here, which number you, uh, well, the Pride Center.
Oh, yeah, I haven't gone through that yet. Okay. That is at the very bottom, Brady, can you find that on that, on that, please?
What line is it, Mary? Between 24 and 25.
It would be number 29. I don't know where.
It's over there.
Yep. What was your question?
I was just looking at, kind of wanted to hear a little bit more about.
About the Pride Center, sure. Um, right now, again, um, we have added two more students, so we have six kids in there right now. Um, so that would even be heavily weighted, um, more than it is. It's amazing how two weeks, when you prepare this, changes.
And one of the costs that we were previously paying, um, for members of the board that were on the board last year, it's about $30,000 a student.
It was.
Uh, when you're putting a student off-site to, to be, you, redoing the services that we're providing in the Pride Center, so keep that in mind.
Right.
So, last year, we were paying, well, until part of the year, most of the, a lot of the year.
With all of us.
Right, $30,000 per student for several students.
So, we had three students up there at $30,000 apiece, and then we had bus-in class, and we had an assistant on the van. And so, when we came to talk about this program, we were able to do it pretty comparable to what we were charging, or what we were being charged for NAC, which is the Northern Children's Center. Now, we're able to have six kids here in the program, and so, we've upped our, our ante. If we had to have all of those kids, $30,000, six of them up at NAC, it would even be a higher cost.
So, it's a good example of caseload factoring with actual program implementation. This is a new program specifically for special education students, high-end special education students. So, they're on the caseload factoring piece like this. But as we increase the number of students in the Pride Center, we're only continually providing great service, and we're not sending district dollars to outside districts or outside agencies.
And we're not getting the police involved, and we're not having the van pulled off to the side of the road. Um, it was, there was a lot, I mean, some of our most severe children in our district, we were sending 45 minutes each way up to Merrill, and it really, first of all, was a safety concern, it was expensive, and police concerns, so, um, this year. This, yeah, transportation was crazy. So, in this year, we've had a couple incidences with students, but very few and far between. Um, the program runs very well, we were lucky to get great staff, um, so I don't know if I'm answering all your questions.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
So, why don't we, we come to the, the overview and the synopsis in terms of recommendation. That when we come through all of this factoring and putting all of this, these empirical points together, um, the recommendation that's gonna be coming forth is, is increasing, um, EBD supports in the middle school.
Yep.
Um, that's, that's what we're seeing out of this project. And it, I put a big workload on Mary, I brought up caseload factoring, she knew exactly what I was talking about. I'm used to using it in multiple districts, and it's good, it's not the end-all, be-all, but it does help provide an understanding for everybody about how decisions are made in a, in a realm, special education, that a lot of people don't have experience in, which is okay. Um, but, so that's where this all kind of led us.
Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, very.
Thank you.
Okay, item 14, other reports, Lazi.
Okay, that'll be me, we have our convention down in Milwaukee, and I believe just a little bit. And, um, if you get your school moves, they do have a little synopsis on what sessions to see and where you would like to go. And then we also received who the big keynote speakers will be, so do your homework and know what you're upping it to.
So, Amy and I are registering for events, so we have events set up for all board members and putting tickets. So, we're running lists and things like that, so I'll be communicating, uh, with everybody as we go with that. Michelle Brown's gonna be joining us at state convention, as well as Steve Kaiser.
Awesome, yes, and then you did have on our Google Doc, some of the, the Aaron's convention, some that went out for us, so.
We signed up for that one already, absolutely, yeah.
Yes, Mike, stand up for that.
What is that?
We signed up for that.
Wait a second.
All right, item.
Conclusion with CISA 9.
CISA 9, uh, the CISA 9, our Board of Control was putting in your tickets, but I'd like to ask Mr. Woodmore, I don't wanna put him on the spot. Presentation of, uh, trauma-sensitive schools, do you have a realization?
Absolutely, uh, it's a lot of, it's a lot of what we're focused on with our Mental Health Navigator action, is that trauma-sensitive schools is dialed in, um, the decisions this board made about the grant we received, and the Mental Health Navigator, it's great information, and we are worried, locked in, with a lot of the steps and processes that they're talking about.
Are all the schools in CISA involved in that, or is it just?
Um, not all the schools, but we are, we are a leader in some ways with how we're trying to, it's a very proactive what we're trying to do with respect to the Mental Health Navigator. We had some discussions at our PAC meeting, which is all the superintendents in the CISA get together. Um, it actually has come up a few times, um, in terms of what other people want to do. They actually just asked me, okay, I said, well, we'll know more in a year once we've continued to develop the position. So, yes, we're, we're doing a great bit of it.
And each, each of our buildings has a team, a mental health team, besides a district team, and they are all going through all the trauma-sensitive videos that are on DPI. Um, we also are talking about if our calendar is approved, that we would have some more days to do more training with all staff.
Yep, so we're, we're putting a lot into trauma-sensitive.
Thank you.
Item 15, future agenda items.
Couple of things that I have are, uh, for future agenda items are bringing, let's see, it's, uh, funding pieces back to the finance committee and then to the whole board. Um, Marcy talked about in-house costs for running the board. You know, I could obviously look into that and put some research into that, um, those are the things that, that I saw.
Does anybody have anything they want to bring back, January?
Well, I just, maybe this is inappropriate, because it could be a future agenda item, but in, in regards to, we went through a big cycle last year in regards to how you, this board's recommending you vote on topics that there's resolutions for, and Mike made a recommendation, and it almost, and then we moved right on, and I don't know that that's representative of the board, I personally disagree with, with that position. So, in order to give you, I, I'm just not comfortable with our board handling that topic in a fashion of a couple of board members say, hey, vote no on this, and then we move forward without holding the board. So, I don't know if that needs to be an agenda topic to discuss how we're gonna do that, but we seem to have given you guidance with two members of a large board giving you your thoughts on how we'd like you to vote on behalf of this board. So, I, I just have a personal problem with how we handled that previously.
Previously, though, Diane, we did that, remember when Cory, we went through each item and, and we went through.
Don't wanna do that, but if there's, if there's an issue.
And at that time, the conclusion we came to, I thought, if at any point anyone wanted to speak with me and give their, their input, their insight, their opinion, is, is, you know, totally up to those. I mean, I guess that is something we could act a vote on if we wanted to vote. Do you want the main consent of the board, is that the way I vote, or do I go with what majority of the board feels?
Yes, I mean, yes, you're correct, we did vote on that last year, we did bring it back too, because some of the items that we went and spent all that time on, yep, never even came up for a vote. So, that being said, yes, we decided after long conversations, that we would leave it up to Kelly's judgment to vote, but yes, I mean, if you have concerns on some, you know, if you wanna bring it back as a future, you know, and discuss this in January.
I'll just communicate with Kelly.
I think we should.
I'm fine.
Yes, we can, I mean.
If, if, like, there's one topic, that's great, I really don't think the board should have to go through line by line.
Totally agree.
No, I agree.
Totally agree with you, okay? I only bring that up because it was brought up in the board meeting to provide you with guidance, and I think if we're gonna do that, then the entire board should take a moment and give you an accurate representation of the flavor of the board on a particular topic.
So, you want that.
That's fair.
That, that is true, but when it gets down there, and if Kelly votes on it, it may have changed.
That's what I.
Right, that's why I think that in the course of a vote like that, the discussion and parameters, and in that case, Mike, we elected Kelly to represent us, and I have total confidence in her ability to understand what our intention is and vote appropriately.
So, would you like to come back in January?
Well, when?
It's between Monday.
It's before we meet before.
Then I would like that addressed in January.
We'll go with the one item.
I'm done with that. That's been a whole. Yes.
Then we are really, can you revisit the 4K?
Yes.
It's impressions.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, um, it doesn't need to go, I don't know where it goes.
Right.
But, um, maybe goes to CNI, I don't know. I have an interest in, and I think others might have an interest if we discussed it, in what are increasingly known as microschools, have you followed some of that movement?
Like the voucher schools?
No, no, it's, uh, well, that, that could be, but that really wasn't what I was thinking of. I thought of it inside of our current structure, um.
Oh, school within school.
Yes, um, I wasn't thinking of setting, setting up a charter, that wasn't what I was thinking about. But, um, there, it's the modern era version of the one-room schoolhouse, where kids of every grade level, 15 to 20 kids typically are in a classroom, making utilization of technologies and software and more personalized education.
Yeah, this is really big in CISA 1, so I've done some.
It is, okay.
Some work, and the CISA 1 is Waukesha, sorry. So, it's Waukesha, uh, Pewalki, um, in that, so not Milwaukee public schools, but in the corridor. So, CISA 1, they actually have a center called the Personalized Learning Center through CISA 1.
Okay.
So, districts can do visits to CISA 1, we actually, I actually did one with several of my staff. There's districts like Kettle Moraine specifically, uh, where they do, um, they actually use charters, but Pewalki doesn't, where they do large groups, and they do, for like, you could take a foreign language approach, or you can do a, a CTE approach, and you can personalize your learning for half a day, in other words, no classes for half a day. You're gonna be in an environment where it's experiential learning or project-based learning, and then the other half a day. There's locations like the Inspire Center through Waukesha.
Typically, I bring something up like this, and then I would think you would maybe, if, if you're so inclined, would send it to a committee for evaluation or.
That would be likely CNI, so personalized learning initiatives, CISA 1 is, is large into personalized learning. I know several of the administrators down there.
I, I'm an advocate of charters, but I don't really want to take resources from the school district, because I think there are things that we can do inside of the schools, inside of our school district, because we have a great staff, a great team, and good leadership. So, I just think that we should always be looking at alternatives to improvement.
But I think first, we should get to the strategic planning.
Yeah, no, I'm not opposed to it.
And all that before.
It's a good idea.
Anything else? Okay. Item 16, moving it to close executive session. We'll stick to lasers, okay? Roll out, please. The Kinsburns.
Yeah.
Lommerings. US. Yes. The town government. Yes. Hanson. Herney.
Yes.
Kaiser.
Fair enough. Yeah. I was feeling all. So, you know, 20 years ago, you'll remember, we discussed it in the charter with Wausau and Everest in the Wausau East Building, as a technology center, school-based, remember that? And it never.